I'd like to call to order the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners meeting workshop for Wednesday, May fourteenth. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, our nation, God, indivisible, infinite, and just.
Next week we'll be approving the minutes for workshop Legislative and Salary Board. Are there any questions or comments needed to be made on the approval of next week's minutes? Then if we're hearing none, executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning. On Friday, May ninth, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the 2026 budget. In addition to the Solicitor's Office, Chris Davis, Director of Finance and Budget, was in attendance. On Monday, May twelfth, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding collective bargaining agreements and pending litigation. In addition to the Solicitor's Office, Rob Morgan, Deputy Director of Human Resources, and Adam Santucci, Labor Counsel, were in attendance. On Tuesday, May thirteenth, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the purchase or release of real property, bond proceeds, public safety, and procurement processes. In addition to the Solicitor's Office, Randy Jaeger, Director of Human Services, and Chris Davis, Director of Finance and Budget, were in attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. Any questions for Mr. Hagerty? Hearing none, we'll move on to public participation on agenda items only. This is participation just on the agenda items before us. It is a three-minute cap on public comment, and we are live streaming. Anyone for public participation on agenda items only? Seeing none, we'll move on to Directors and Guests. We'll begin with Cassie Ruschinsky.
Good morning.
For the personnel packet today, I just want to request a vote on item two.
On item two in the personnel?
Mm-hmm.
That's the only vote requested for today?
Yep.
Do I have a motion for item two, any personnel transaction packet?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Chris Davis. Davis, how you doing?
Morning.
I have no changes to the purchase work packet sent out earlier this week. Ready for your vote.
Any questions for Mr. Davis? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Clerk's report. Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning, Commissioners. There are six items for your consideration on today's agenda. An emergency rental assistance two agreement, an addendum to an existing agreement with A Miracle for Share Incorporated, a property insurance renewal agreement, the appointment of Suzanne Donovan to the Dauphin County Gaming Advisory Board, an amendment to the sale agreement for Techport, and an agreement for temporary clerical services. Of course, Tuesday is Election Day, so I wanted to acknowledge and thank our Elections Director, Chris Backman, and all of the dedicated staff here at Dauphin County who worked tirelessly to ensure our ability to hold free and fair elections. The folks who make these elections run smoothly do not get the credit they deserve, and I wanted to thank them in advance for all the hard work and preparation that they have put into making next week a success. So, thank you to the hardworking staff there. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. Any questions for Mr. Hagerty? Seeing none, Solicitors Report. Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. There are six items, as our Chief Clerk indicated, which have all been reviewed and approved for action by the Board today.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Owens?
Nope.
Hearing none, we have a training packet before us with one item. Do I have a motion for approval of that item?
Still moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now on to matters requiring Board action. We have six items. Are there any that need to be pulled out for a separate vote?
Just a point of parliamentary procedure and clarification. If we are tabling an item, would that need to be pulled out, or can you make that motion directly? I would ask that we table item number one. Make a motion to table items, item number one on today's matter requiring Board action.
Okay. Motion from Commissioner Hartwick to table item number one, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have items two and through six before us. Any, anything need to be pulled out for separate vote? I'd like to pull out items three and five separately. Does anything else need to be voted on separately, or can we do two, four, and six together?
I'll make a motion to approve items two, four, and six.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three, agreement between Dauphin County and Travelers Indemnity Company for Insurance, $775,000. Do we have a motion?
Some.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. I'll open discussion just to express to the public that this, this represents our property insurance, and this number reflects like a stark unavoidable reality when we fail to invest in maintaining and upgrading county infrastructure. We pay for it elsewhere, and often at a very high cost. Our premiums for this insurance have tripled in five years. In 2020, it was $213,900. Today, it is $775,946. Now, inflation is a part of that. Obviously, the pandemic is a part of that. I don't want to deny that. But multiple floods happening in our facilities is a big part of that, and part of that is infrastructure challenges and not having a proper infrastructure plan for our facilities that are outdated and many are neglected. And so, it's just something that the public needs to be aware of, that we have over a hundred properties, and management of those properties is critical to not seeing numbers like this continue to double in price year over year or over the course of five years, triple in price. And so, I'm committed to it. I know the Board's had a lot of conversations about how we can get the proper management in place to ensure that our properties don't continue to exhaust costs in other places due to the lack of investment. So, with that also, I want to emphasize that I'd request that the Chief Clerk and Risk Manager begin researching brokers that might be able to negotiate a better deal too. Seeing this triple in price, I think, gives us, you know, the ability to go back out on the market and look at other brokers who might be able to get us a better deal. I am going to vote yes to this because this is critical insurance that we definitely need, but I think an acknowledgement of the, of the reality is important.
Could I just make one additional comment? I don't disagree. I, I would just ask, I know as a part of our look at infrastructure, one of the things that was the primary discussion and request of the staff was to look at areas that could present the biggest exposure related to risk and have discussions directly with our risk management company about ways that we can make investments that would have a direct correlating impact on the reduction of our exposure and risk. I'm wondering, has that list been compiled? And, you know, as, as we had these discussions about infrastructure and investments, I, I think one way to do it in a, a way to make those upgrades even more efficient is to address the areas of concern that keep driving these costs up. I mean, we can't replace every old pipe we have, but I know that in the initial assessment, there was a look at areas that the risk and the insurers were saying should be invested in. I, I just don't know if there's been a compiled list of, of those areas of infrastructure that may help the Board prioritize ways to be able to curb this spending in the future and these future increases.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
No. Motion carries. Onto the last item before us, number five, an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement for 3721 Techport Drive extending closing date. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. As we head into discussion for this, I have quite a bit to say, but I'll open it up to my colleagues to begin. Okay. This is, just to be clear, an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement for Techport Drive. And those who aren't familiar, this is a human service building project, and it extends the closing date sixty days, but further commits us another $300,000 into the project where we're already committed $400,000 on the down payment into the project. In 2022, Dauphin County entered into an agreement with a commercial realty firm to identify property that could bring all of our human services operations under one roof. It was sold as a cost savings, efficiency boosting initiative, a centralized, accessible, and coordinated hub for care. Also, it would provide a better workspace for all of our human services employees given the current challenges experienced in the spaces in which they currently occupy. In principle, I fully support this vision, and I want it to be clear, I think it's a really good idea. The challenge is not the vision, it's the execution. When I took office in January of 2024, I was told that this project was ready to go, and I needed to sign off immediately, and my vote would be required the following week for something that had been in the works since 2022. I had deep reservations and questions that were met with resistance and even frustration. Among my concerns were the lack of planning, the inability to answer basic questions around projections of costs, and the fact that we were purchasing a property from a business tied to a then-sitting Pennsylvania center. Given my concerns, I remained a behind-the-scenes no vote while continuing to seek answers. Then, after a period of staff turnover, we welcomed our new chief solicitor, Matt Owens. And let me be clear, Matt has done extraordinary work on this project. He renegotiated a better deal for the county, literally saving us more than a million dollars on this project, and he addressed many of the legal and financial concerns that I had previously raised. So, on December eighteenth, 2024, I made a difficult decision. I chose to quiet my instinct to vote no, and instead voted yes to allocate 10.4 million for the purchase of a new property, including a $400,000 down payment, based on the belief that this would improve the working conditions for our employees and lead to long-term budget savings. That was 147 days ago, and in those 147 days, have we secured a project manager? No. An architect? No. A construction manager? No. An engineer? No. We have not signed a single contract. I didn't even see quotes for an architect or construction manager until two days ago on day 145. Now, we're being asked to extend the closing date sixty days, but not just extend the closing date, gamble another $300,000 in non-refundable fees. If this project falls apart in July, we will have lost $700,000 in taxpayer money. Let me be clear, we have no final costs for this project. It could be 15 million, it could be 25 million, it could be much, much more. And that's before we factor in tariffs, inevitable change orders, or the ongoing challenges of federal cuts, given that our human services are funded primarily with federal funds. Just yesterday, for the first time, I was informed that we would need to secure an additional bond to finance the portions, certain portions of this renovation. That's a significant financial obligation, and it's being raised 146 days after the Board took action to approve this project. We already issued a bond that includes funds for this building and other infrastructure needs. Now, we're being told that bond isn't sufficient and will need to take out another one, right in the middle of a budget crisis. That is simply not an option. What's more troubling is that this wasn't disclosed earlier. It's now being presented as if it was always part of the plan when it was clearly not communicated. Also newly introduced yesterday was the idea of hiring a county staff member, specifically to oversee the construction manager and safeguard the county's interests. This is yet another unplanned cost added late in the process. Plainly put, this is not responsible government function. Like, this is not how a responsible government functions. This isn't how major capital projects are managed. And with all due respect, this Board is not equipped to be real estate, to be a real estate development firm. Meanwhile, office space is coming onto the market every day. We haven't seriously explored new alternatives since 2023. We haven't paused to ask if we're still on the right path, given the changes within the market. And this is happening while we are already facing major priorities as a county that we have to focus on. Things like a healthcare RFP, collective bargaining negotiations, engineer procurement, and much more. And our Solicitor's Office is already overworked and overwhelmed, taking on the burden of this work, which is really outside of the scope of what they do. Now, here's the part that truly makes it untenable for me. On Monday, Commissioner Hartwick, who has quarterbacked this project from the start, was scheduled to meet with a key stakeholder, a stakeholder who might have helped resolve several critical issues and put some, some of my concerns at bay. Commissioner Hartwick didn't show for that meeting. Our chief solicitor was left to take the meeting alone. Commissioner Hartwick instead prioritized a County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania C-CAP meeting over salvaging a $10 million county project days before this Board was set to take action, and that's just on the sale. That's not the cost to retrofit. I share Commissioner Priest's disappointment, as he said several weeks ago, quote, "There's been little to no activity in the past six months. So, we're trying to determine now whether this is even a viable proj, project," end quote. I just want to be clear, this isn't political spin. It's been 147 days since we acted. Gave Commissioner Hartwick the green light. It's fact. And if this deal falls apart, we will have lost $400,000 in taxpayer funds due to a complete lack of follow-through from the person who ran point on this project from the beginning. Let me say this plainly, I will not be one who gambles another $300,000 on a project that hasn't been managed, budgeted, or planned with the rigor it demands. That's not good government. It's blind hope, and taxpayers deserve better. I understand the appeal of this project. I want better working conditions for our employees too. We owe them better than deteriorating inadequate office conditions, and I want a human services model that puts people first and streamlines care. But I will not support going down a path where the only thing we've proven is how unprepared we can lead in this effort. While I cannot support it today, if the decision is made, I will do all I can to make it a success. But I feel strongly that the best path in front of us is to step back, hire professionals, assess the market, revisit our real needs, and do this the right way. To those who've worked hard on this project, especially since 2022, thank you. Solicitor Owens, thank you for going above and beyond, but you shouldn't have had to carry this alone. I also want to be clear that this is not a reflection on our dedicated human services employees who work every day to serve the residents of Dauphin County. Despite this vote today, for me, I remain committed to these employees getting the resources they need. And to the public, know this, losing $400,000 is absolutely awful, but it is better than losing millions and millions of dollars and going further in debt. We can learn from this, we can reset, we can move forward with a professional plan, but continuing to double down on a flawed process is not leadership, it's negligence.
If, if I could just provide a couple of things. First of all, the only thing I think at risk today would be the idea of not trying to extend this. We are not under any real deadlines. This is a sort of an idea even to the end of the month to extend a contract where the dollars that were put up would be placed into the purchase price of the, of the actual building. So, there is no dollars that are, that are going to be lost. The challenges with this project have been many, and, and quite frankly, project have been many, and quite frankly, one of the things that I've attempted to value to do, and I will do, is to look forward and not backwards, and being able to address a number of these concerns. And I believe I would share the board's vision that this is a project that, quite frankly, I've acted on, with the opportunity to save $25 million, not jeopardize $400,000 that is currently not at risk. I think a lot of the confusion has come related to understanding the details of a bond issue, assigning individuals to be able to make some professional service decisions, and then also sort of the scope and the idea of this $15 million number that somehow has become in people's minds around the overall project related to the borrowing. And I'll be pretty clear, and this can be affirmed, this is too important a project to have any politics be at play. I'm just going to be very clear. I think public service is something that I've taken highly, and I know that this is a very complicated project that has a lot of moving parts. And some of the things you don't realize related to this building are there are multiple leases that are in place that allow for capital generation of revenue, that we had to take taxable bond notes out in order to meet the timing where our leases expire and move into the building. So it's not like these things can just occur. It is a matter of execution and timing. The other big challenge within this project was the original amount of the project in 2022 was at $30 million. That was the original scope of a project. It was this board's decision, and rightfully so. There was a extension and a build on to this building that was a part of the original plan. That extension and build on, I think, added about $12 million to the cost of the project. There was a lot of deliberation related to these days of whether this build out was in, whether it was out, how those determinations were going to be made. And when the board made that decision related to the build out, we were operating under a different scope. Now, I still believe, in having discussions and looking back at the original documentation, that this project will be about an $18 million to $20 million project. The idea of the dollars for this are also a part of a schedule for federal and state reimbursement. So of any of the other bond funds that were borrowed for this, the only ones that are subject not to be repaid by general fund dollars. So let's say we divert projects here and say this project's no longer moving forward. Those $20 million which were borrowed for this specific project, there are taxable and non-taxable revenues based upon this project. Unwinding those are going to be a challenge. And the second part is the ability for us to be able to move forward with an $18 million project. Then the additional borrowing came in when we had an idea of saying, and this was literally a discussion, there's a guaranteed energy savings program that exists in the state of Pennsylvania. It's one of the few things that the legislature has gotten right. It allows you to generate and raise capital for the structural improvements internally to a building to be able to ensure that it has the most efficient lighting, air conditioning, roofing. There is a number of pieces to this building internally that need upgrades. It's a very well-maintained building, but to be able to make those internal upgrades, we were trying to figure out a way to avoid those additional costs by looking forward to a guaranteed energy savings program. There's been challenges, quite frankly, from the buyer, I mean, the individual seller of this project, in acquiring some basic information like blueprints, like former energy bills, like things that are needed to be ascertained that, quite frankly, absent me going to the office of this individual and demanding that we receive these documentations, it's something that we've been in multiple daily contacts with in order to be able to ascertain that information. Trying to present information to the board that is not factually accurate and setting unrealistic expectations is also setting this thing up for failure. So until you're able to gain the actual facts and statistics related to energy savings and that mechanism, it's hard to bring you any kind of facts. And I've heard from this project also that there are ranging estimates from $100,000 a square foot to $75 or $60 a square foot. Those are all speculative discussions because even in this process, there's been arrangements for a next door neighbor to provide furniture at a significantly reduced cost. There's been a lot of work that is done that is not seen related to the project that has gone on to really provide a significant amount of cost savings. So today, whether we move forward or we don't, I will respect the board's decision. But the idea of putting money at risk and taxpayer monies at risk would only be made by not extending this opportunity to be able to allow this project to receive and move to full fruition. And I certainly hope that we've thought through the unwinding of the bond financing, which is also another complicating factor that is only specific to this building, that is going to promote, present a real challenge in moving in another direction. It could present significant costs to taxpayers as a result. And then you have arbitrage issues and other concerns. So from my perspective, I talked about having my full commitment, and let me address Monday. I'd be glad to do that since you brought it up. I have been committed to a process by selecting an executive director of the County Commissioners Association, and we needed to be a part of every interview or not any interview. And that day, I informed both Matt and I informed the provider that we will schedule an immediate follow-up meeting, that Matt can handle this, and I had planned to meet with, and I called the individual the very next morning to be able to find an update. Matt and I tried to confer related to the meeting. I certainly did not neglect it. I fulfilled one commitment and attempted to try to balance another. And as a matter of fact, while I was in that meeting, I was also balancing the executive session, which often happens in the job of a county commissioner. There are multiple tasks and obligations that you have at a similar time. I will make it clear, and I'll state it for the public record. I believe this is the most important project we could potentially do over the course of this administration. I do not want to risk and will not risk any taxpayer dollars to move forward. I will respect the decision of this board regardless of which direction you move, but I feel very confident in our abilities to be able to engage the right professional service folks to allow for both the service of individuals that will save lives and the ability to save 25 million in potential taxpayer dollars. And we're talking about cuts from the federal government. We need to be as creative as we can to plow that money back into services. And in order to do that, this project gives us our best chance to make sure that the services we provide to individuals in this community are not sacrificed. And I'm fully committed to moving forward in a way that's going to provide an outstanding model of the kind of one-stop shop that we can expect with the planning that's went into this project. There's a lot more details, but I will certainly save that for another day. I think we're prepared for a vote.
I'd like to share with the public something else. Over the last 30 days, I've got a lot more hands-on in this project because I assumed things were moving behind the scenes. And in that time, I've met with multiple potential vendors or individuals who are interested in this project. In those conversations, the idea of 18 to 20 million from every single one I talked to seemed incredibly unrealistic. And then, these are, two days ago, the quotes that were received. And as I've gone through these quotes, none of them are specific quotes in the sense of every single one talks about anticipated fees that we don't know, because they don't have enough information on the project to know how to even give us a quote for the project. So every quote is different, one being upwards of almost a million dollars, and one being as low as, one didn't even provide costs. One was under 100,000, one was 84,000 with a bunch of TBD. One was, like I said, a million, almost a million dollars. And even that one, even the one that was a million, said there's going to be unexpected costs. I just don't think we even know what this project is because we can't communicate it to vendors what they're expected to do. They want the work, they want, they want to be part of the project, but they also know in every single thing they're handing us that whatever they give us, it's going to come with all kinds of change orders. It's going to come with all kinds of realities of us finding out what the work is. 147 days ago, this board took action to allocate 10.4 million dollars to enter into a sales agreement. And we still don't even know, like, we don't even have a ballpark of a cost. 18 to 20 million dollars, that's not a statistical measurement that I can see on an Excel spreadsheet of costs here, costs there, costs here, costs there. This is how much architecture fees are going to cost. This is how much engineering fees are going to cost. Like, this is what finishing fees look like. Like, we don't have any of that information because we're not equipped to do this work. We need to go back to the drawing board, hire a project manager from the start, and then allow something that takes place to look far more professional, and to also take the burden off our staff who aren't supposed to hold this. And you said this is the most important project to the county. And I would argue, if that's the case, then on Monday, you should have been in the meeting, if it was the most important project to the county. Commissioner Priest? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
No.
Nay. Moving forward, former business, seen a former business. Commissioners comments? Commissioner Hartwick?
Yes, I wanted to just quickly report. On Monday, I wanted to thank staff from our Drug and Alcohol Department for hosting a very robust addictions conference at Penn State Harrisburg. Had the opportunity to be able to address the many heroes that were in the room. And I want to thank both Dr. Weston Kensinger and the Chancellor Perez for the partnership at the Pollock Addiction Research Center. I think it was a productive conference and grateful for the opportunity to be able to participate.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartwick. Commissioner Priest?
I want to follow up the chief of staff's comments earlier and thanking Chris Backman and his team, 1,100 volunteers who are going to be working Election Day for us at our 159 precincts and wards from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, plus the hours before and after. And then the goal is to again get those numbers out there by 11:30 at night. We're one of the few counties in the state of Pennsylvania that can make that claim that we have our numbers in Election Day. So I want to thank them for the great work that they do. But also, you probably noticed in the last couple of weeks, we have come before us for Human Resources, a young lady by the name of Cassie Rzinski. And I bring you that up because we have interns that are coming here this summer from, I believe, San Diego State and Temple University to work on this floor. And then other interns have been brought in throughout the year. But she was a former intern here in Dolphin County, January of last year. And then when she graduated from college, she joined Dolphin County in the Personnel Department, and want to welcome her and thank her for being part of the team. And this goes to show folks out there that if you're interested in working in county government, take advantage of our internships, and you can become a full-time employee here at the county moving forward. So Cassie, great job, and look forward to working with you.
Welcome to the team, Cassie. Also want to emphasize, as Commissioner Priest did, to get out and vote on Tuesday. I know we talk a lot about the right to vote. As an election board, we talk about that, encouraging people to use that right and to get out. And we thank all the election workers who make that possible, who are planning even now and have been planning for quite some time. We thank them for all their work, and we encourage the public, you maybe watching this, listening here in the room, to get out and vote on Tuesday. All right, we will now open it up for public participation. I probably have a list, but I'm going to go off of. Just a reminder, it is a three-minute time cap, and we are streaming live. We'll begin with Gene Stilp and Tom Connolly's on deck.
Good morning.
Morning, folks. Morning. Gene Stilp, Fishing Creek Valley. Months ago, I was here and I asked that the commissioners asked for the contract between Constellation Energy and Microsoft, okay, so that you know what that company that owns property and creates waste in this county actually is dealing with, what the contract actually says. And I just want to urge you to do that again, to try and find out what that contract contains. It's between two private entities, but at the same time, it's a dynamic public effect in this county. And if you could somehow get a copy of that contract to see what is actually going on, that'd be good. Secondly, a while ago, also I asked to look at the ability of this county to secure money from a fund at the federal level that is there, that exists. Because when different utilities own different nuclear plants, have owned Three Mile Island, put taxpayer money and put county money into a fund for high-level nuclear waste disposal. And then 10, 15 years ago, the utilities were said that the, that money was not being used for high-level waste disposal, so therefore they want to stop putting that money into that fund. And they were allowed to by a federal court case. And then different utilities across the country, I think 69 utilities sued to get money back from that, okay, to return to the utilities. Now, at this point, there are $47 billion, billion dollars in the federal fund for high-level nuclear waste fund. That money cannot be touched, however. So the federal people are, the federal government is paying these utilities directly, money to reimburse them. At this point, that's nice, the money goes back to utilities. The question is, has that money ever made it back to individual ratepayers here, government entities like ourselves, taxpayers or companies in it? It might be good for some kind of investigation to see if that money is, has the ability to be collected by the county for past rate increases and rate distributions to the high-level waste fund that affected everybody's, everybody's, including the county's government, including their funds. So there may be some opportunity there, and I'm looking at that myself to see how that is done. But it may be an opportunity. So just a thought. There's no reason why money that the taxpayers, excuse ratepayers paid in, and the county governments paid into that fund should not be somehow recollectable, collectible, if the individual utilities have been doing that, collecting that for a bunch of years now. That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Stilp. Next up, we have Tom Connolly, and that exhausts my list. And if there's any in the room who would like to have public participation following that, we'll have that available. Mr. Connolly? And others?
They're small, they can share it to you. Good morning.
Good morning.
As you can see, I have my hands full. But when you have inconvenient meetings at inconvenient times.
Please, could you please state your name?
Tom Connolly, 345 North Harrisburg Street. I was here last week, and I saw an extensive agenda, and a lot of good programs got money, 172 tourism grants, 100-plus gaming grants. I didn't see anything on the agenda that had to do with me. I saw 16 items under correspondence. I went downstairs because I had my granddaughter, this is Avani, one, Adri's four, had to get him from daycare. So I watched the meeting downstairs, you had an overflow room, and the meeting continued on to the point where I had to go get Adri. When I was at 13th and Dairy, headed to the daycare that he goes to, I saw there was an item that wasn't on the agenda. There were 16 items under correspondence, but there ended up being an item that I would like to call coward spondence, coward spondence. And that was sent from a coward who's a state rep named Tom Mahaffey. I give Commissioner Priest credit for being loyal, but it was a very misleading letter. So that led me to look up the correspondence that I had with Mr. Mahaffey on the morning of the day that I read the information from March 8th, seven years before. And in his correspondence, which I will share with everyone, he said that he called the three county commissioners the night before. He had that much access. He called the three county commissioners. Commissioner Douglas was not a county commissioner, so that would have been Pacey, Priest, and Hartwick. And then he said he agreed with the gaming board's recommendation to cut Swatara down to $13,000, historic low. I want to thank the commissioners for last Wednesday giving Swatara Township $218,000. We have a different state rep now, so I advise everybody, look for a different state rep. If Tom Mahaffey can only get you $13,000 and you're a large municipality in Swatara Township, you have a problem with that state rep. But I'm going to stick with this story, that it was part of an effort to punish me, and I do stuff to get punished for. Look what I'm doing right now. But politically, to punish me, he gave the letter of support in August of 20, when the board was controlled by a Republican majority. The election was November, and I was elected, and on January 2nd, I was placed as president of that board, an all-Republican board. I was placed as president. And that's when this operation went into effect to punish me and discredit Swatara Township on public safety, on public safety, to withhold money for a police dog, the first dog in years. Swatara Township has five. We've been able to lower the tax rates in Swatara Township by effective policing. What municipality can say that? We also increased police. Public safety is not a political game. And I'm just going to finish by saying that after I made the comments last week, or after the comments were made, Tom Mahaffey financed a campaign mailer against a former police chief that just came out, and it references that person's connection to me. This is in the Republican primary. And I'm going to finish by saying, look up Dolphin County Leadership PAC. Tom Mahaffey is the last person to donate $10,000 to that PAC that sends out these awful hit pieces against Republicans as well in Dolphin County. I apologize for being over.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly.
And I just want to add while I'm leaving, I have these two grandchildren, I have 23 godchildren. godchildren, and I'm very tempted to bring them all. Once school's out, I may just bring them.
Anyone else for public comment?
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Michael Larks, I live at 518 Sunday Drive in Swatara Township. This is a personal message that I want to give to my friend George. I just want to make it known that today is George's 42 days of being sober, and I understand what you're going through. We text every single day. Yesterday, you sent me a message, and you said addiction is never home, it's only rented, and that the rent is due every day. I just celebrated 76 months of being sober, so I applaud you, George. And this right here is just something that I'm going to give you because as your friend that we've been texting every day for about 10, 15 years, and I just want you to know, George, I love you.
Appreciate it, love you too.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We are adjourned. Just a reminder, we do have retirement board meeting, will be starting in five minutes.